Call this meeting into order, verify compliance with open meeting law, notification adopted agenda, and let's press the lead to the play.
The United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Kathy, any comments?
Uh, no.
No comments?
No.
No comments tonight, folks?
No comments.
Shucks. Alright, starting with number four, consent agenda. A, approval of December vouchers/vouchers payable. B, approval of November 23rd, December 4th, December 14th, 2020 school board minutes. C, record of school board safety drills. And D, approval of personnel recommendations. Anybody want anything out of there? Uh, look for a motion to accept consent agenda A, B, C, and D?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me just go any further, sorry, let's see who's on, can you tell me who's on the virtual? Do you recognize yourself?
He did, he said his name.
Just Jonathan, anybody else on there?
Uh, Charlie Tollison, high school principal.
Hi, Charlie. Anybody else?
Uh, Dave Pentec, athletic activities director.
Hi, Dave. Alright, welcome. Speak up if you want to get my attention. Alright, action items. Five A, high school and Edgerton Elementary roofing project. Michael?
So, this is a continuation from a report that we gave in November on the state of our roofing. Uh, this project, we got a competitive, we went through the competitive bid process, opened up bids, Langer Roofing came in with the low proposal. Uh, we had initially set aside in November eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. Uh, I think the number came in around seven eighty-seven, if I'm not mistaken. Seven eighty-four. Uh, and so, as Todd explained in November, this takes care of the majority of our nineteen sixty-seven roofing here at the high school. Uh, the only old section that remains is over the pool, and we'll get to that, I'm sure, later at some other point. Um, and it starts now on some early nineties roofing, uh, at Edgerton that is in some pretty bad shape. Reminder that we are paying this, uh, through the, uh, state trust fund loan that we received. Paid back over the next eight years, and, um, you know, when you, when you slowly expend these dollars out, as we're doing, uh, it's a really prudent way to, um, save taxpayer, uh, dollars because your, your, the impact to the, uh, state aid is much slower, instead of taking the dollars all at once and having it hit our, hit our books at once. So, uh, that's another strategy of why we're using the state trust fund loan. Uh, this is, finally, this is, as a reminder, this is replacing debt that is falling off, um, non-referendum debt. And so, we have the last payment here in March for non-referendum debt, and then, next year, uh, we'll pick up this debt, uh, and continue the, really, the normal payments that we have been making.
Any questions for Mike?
Are you, um, so, there was something in our notes about timing that we need to get this done, like, in December or something like that? Yes?
Um, we, I needed to, uh, take the, the, the loan out, um, prior to, uh, December 4th. So, the loan has been taken out.
Okay.
Per board approval.
Okay, so we've taken out the whole, like, eight hundred thou-
Yup.
Okay. Okay. And then, are we also talking about the capital improvement plan, or is that?
Uh, we're not talking capital improvement plan tonight. We'll probably bring that back in February, uh, to take a look at now what has been lined off on that, uh, particular plan, what now ships up to the top, how do we continue to fund it, all those, uh, good pieces. So, that'll probably be a February, uh, discussion, maybe March, but I prefer February.
Okay, thanks.
And what will happen to the unused funds from the eight hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, I was gonna, uh, discuss that, but that's a, that's a good question. So, when we took out the funds, it was for, and we can only spend on two, two items. It is either the cafeteria remodel or the roofing. So, we're gonna have about sixty-three thousand dollars in unused funds. We could simply give those back to the state trust fund. Uh, we could cover some of the remaining, um, cafeteria project, there's just some dollars hanging out there. We could cover that, and thus, not deplete our Fund Forty-One account and have some dollars sitting there for capital improvements in the following years. So, those are really our two, our two options, either spend it on the, on the cafeteria to save Fund Forty-One dollars or give it back to the state.
And is there a contingency in the roofing budget?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, I don't know, Quinn, typically they set aside somewhere in the five to eight percent, but I don't know that, that detailed breakdown. Uh, we've been pretty good with Langer, Langer's been doing most of our roofing. They've come in under budget each time, um, so I would expect, I expect the same, but I don't know.
Any other questions? Just clearing his throat. Okay, uh, I would look for a motion to approve, uh, item five A, high school and Edgerton Elementary roofing project.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Five B, extension of Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act.
So, this, uh, this one definitely does have, uh, some time contingency on it. Um, so, as of, back in, back in March, the CARES Act, uh, which was passed by Congress to deal with, uh, the COVID-nineteen fallout, uh, provided two forms of leave for employees, um, across, across the economy. Uh, it was emergency paid sick leave, uh, which is a bank of eighty hours or, um, ten days, if you want to look at it that way, uh, to either to care for yourself or to care for those you care for. It was just an additional bank so that you were, um, able to stay home and still receive, um, your, your daily pay rate while you were out and trying to minimize, uh, the impact of, of the sickness. Uh, the, the benefit, or the only thing that, that, um, came to at least school districts was that whatever dollars we paid from the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, uh, we didn't have to pay FICA on that. Um, so, through this, uh, nobody obviously used it, uh, March, April, May, June, uh, nobody was here, and thus, the lead, the bank didn't have to be, uh, utilized. When we came back in September, people were utilizing this bank, um, if they were having symptoms or seeking care. But we ended up paying out about, uh, between both these leaves, I should say, about hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, in, um, paid leave. Uh, to not pay the FICA tax on that on our end, uh, was about six thousand dollars, um, and, and taxes we did not pay, have to pay based on this, uh, leave. But the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act was one, one set of, was one set of leave. The other set, that was provided by Congress, this Emergency Family Medical Leave, gave twelve weeks of protected leave if, uh, your school or daycare was closed. So, if that was an instance, any, any of these neighboring districts, if they were closed, you could not have your child attend, not by choice. It wasn't a choice, but if you were forced to, um, have your children stay home, uh, through these closures, you were given protective leave, and there were some rules that went along with that, um, that get a little convoluted, but I tried to put at least some of the notes on there. So, these two separate banks, these two separate leaves, um, are ending December thirty-first. The CARES Act, uh, said through, through this calendar year. And as we were looking at these leaves and what they've, um, done for our employees, and then going out and seeing what other districts, uh, were doing with this, um, expiration date essentially of December thirty-first, we wanted to bring forward, uh, at least a temporary extension of that first leave, that emergency paid sick leave, um, of that eighty-hour bank that employees were provided. Um, what this would allow, or what, how, what this looks in practice is that the bank simply extends. In other words, um, if you haven't touched any of your eighty hours since you've, um, since this bank has been enacted, then the eighty hours continues to, um, move forward, January one through January thirty-first. If you've used it all, there is no more, um, bank for you, uh, to use per, per, uh, the act. And if you've used, you know, whatever you've used in between, would carry over, starting January one. So, if you've only used two of the days, uh, because you were sick, went to go get tested, uh, tested positive, or tested negative, you could come back and you only used two days, or you were then teleworking after those two days, you've got eight days left, let's carry them over to January first, and you can use them through January thirty-first. Very few, if any, districts are, are allowing for the Emergency Family Medical Leave to, uh, carry forward. Uh, it's a little difficult to carry forward, uh, some sort of FMLA leave, um, and it's just, it's just really not happening. Uh, and, and we agree with that assessment, that the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act should be allowed to, um, expire under the, um, under, under the, under the CARES Act law. We chose January thirty-first just to get us out another month, um, knowing that there's going to be, uh, a new president, January twentieth, uh, understanding that there's the possibility of another, um, you know, another congressional act, besides the one that was just passed after January twentieth. Uh, we want to see what the, what that may or may not look like, uh, before we discuss, um, extending any sort of leave beyond January thirty-first. So, that's where we currently stand and what we're currently asking of the board. Because this is an additional benefit outside of the handbook, right? We had to enact this because of congressional law. Now, we are voluntarily bringing this forward as a benefit outside of the employee handbook that we felt it prudent to bring to the board and, um, have you weigh in and act on this particular extension of this, uh, sick, sick bank, uh, this, this leave.
The one thing I'd want to point out is that, remember, the board also passed a policy this year for telework during a pandemic, and so I think that's important to bring forward. So, part of the discussion that we've also had is that, that many of our salaried employees have not had to use this leave because they've been able to telework while under quarantine. However, our hourly employees have not had that because some of them have work that cannot be done through telework. So, they would be disproportionately, um, impacted if it weren't carried forward, at least at this time until we can figure out things. So, I, I wanted to just share that part about it, that while we may have had, you know, there may have been people who, um, that telework policy probably, when Mike shared the dollars that this cost, if you think about the telework piece, had those, those teachers or other people who were quarantined not been able to telework, that number would have been much higher, um, and that, those hours probably would have been depleted for, for many of those, um, people who have taken advantage of the telework situation. And yet, sometimes a person, you know, if they're not under quarantine and have actually tested positive, might be too sick to work, and so that also allows for that. So, I just wanted to not forget about that telework piece of it.
Questions? So, Mike, we're, we are, make a decision to, or you're asking us to make a decision to extend this for a month?
Yes.
And does the federal government compensate us still?
No.
We are gonna pick up any?
The FICA tax will, we would now pay, yes.
The FICA tax?
Yes.
But the, the wage would be under CARES Act?
No, we weren't, the federal government wasn't reimbursing us for the leave at all. That, that is totally on-
Oh, so they just allowed you to do this, no money coming our way, we just have to pay FICA?
They, they told us to do this.
Right.
And we, and the, we did not have to pay FICA taxes on it. So, for large corporations, right, that's, that's a hu, that's a pretty big-
Unfunded mandate.
But it's an unfunded mandate, yeah.
Which is di- The EEFMLA, however, was funded at two-thirds. The difference between the two leaves needs to be clarified.
Yup, so-
Under CARES Act.
Right.
Only during the CAREs-
No, no.
No.
CARES Act did not cover anything. CARES Act did not, we got funding for the CARES Act, we know that. And that was really, we're spending that on is to stay in this hybrid model, right? We're gonna reimburse ourselves with CARES Act dollars for being in this hybrid model for this year. We got nothing to give an extra ten-day bank. We got nothing when teacher goes on emergency fa, family medical leave and we must pay them two-thirds of their pay for ten weeks. We don't get anything reimbursed from that. We do not have to pay FICA taxes.
So, you're saying the majority of the districts around us are not doing this?
Majority are not extending the Emergency Family Medical Leave for the school closure piece.
Do you have a dollar as to, a dollar amount as to what our possible exposure could be?
Well, I would say it'd be a repeat of what we have seen would be a possibility, right? So, if we spent one-thirty, uh, to date, there's a possibility you could have another one-thirty.
This is only for one month, not for four months?
Oh, oh, for one month, yeah, thank you, thank you.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So, the exposure to this point would be minimal, would be minimal. And, and we have done a nice job of, of, you know, if there's the possibility of telework, we've been allowing that to happen.
So, it's our own little PPP?
It's our own little, if you-
We're keeping our people employed, we're, we're picking up the tax.
Yes.
Need help?
I mean, more than, more than likely, Quinn, what, what it would be is, is those te, those, either teachers or support staff, they would be out, more than likely, they'd have a sick bank, their own sick bank leave that they've accumulated to utilize, and we'd be spending the dollars anyway. Um, and that's why I say it's in the budget, it's part of my, it's part of the substitute budget that we have as a district. So, what's really happening is, they're not spending down the sick le, their own sick leave bank that they've accumulated over time.
Jonathan?
I want to clarify, when you said that other districts aren't doing it, there's two types of leave. Most are not doing the EFMLA. I'd say fifty percent-ish of the survey in this area are doing the EPSLA.
I'd say a little, I'd say even a little more than that. I'd say there's definitely a recognition-
So, they are doing that.
-that especially if you are gonna be quarantined due to work exposure, th, that should be covered in some way.
So, some are differentiating about if you got exposed and we're like, we are not gonna get in the business of deciding whether your exposure was or wasn't at school, because nobody knows that for sure, so, but there are some that are using that caveat.
Jonathan? Anybody else? Nancy?
Yeah, just to clarify, so it's still the eighty hours. If people have used their eighty hours, they don't get any more, right?
Now, you're dipping into Whitnall's, your own, your own sick bank.
So, it's their, we're just continuing for those people who haven't used their eighty hours yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Then I will take a motion.
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jonathan?
Yeah, yeah, aye.
Okay, uh, all opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks.
Six reports, A, stay safe, stays open. Ms. Lisa Olson?
Yup, so, um, last night, we were waiting for some of the data, but I did share the majority of the, um, dashboard. Um, I also put a new, a, a new case data dashboard out, uh, last night. So, most of you, all of you here are aware that we, uh, I made the decision to go virtual, um, in combination with, uh, talking to our school nurse and looking at where we were last week. We had been monitoring it, um, sent out a, a letter to high school parents to let them know what was happening and what we had seen from cases, and that we needed their support, and that we were getting reports from our health departments of known positive household contacts still sending students, and that was putting us in a challenging situation. We do know, and the, the data seems to support that, for the, for the most part, uh, kids tend to not have as many symptoms as adults. That's a generalization, I understand that, but that tends to be where it is. And so, often, when there was a positive household member, symptoms from a student maybe are asymptomatic or very few and were coming, and that was causing some issues. So, as we watched the cases climb and we were at a hundred and seventy quarantined high school kids at one point, we said we need to stop that because, um, with the holidays coming up, it's putting families in some situations now unnecessarily. Um, some of the high school students were also on athletic teams, so we were getting twice as many quarantined students because of that. When a basketball player, um, ends up being positive, it's an automatic quarantine of the entire team just because of the way the basketball works. And so, we decided to, um, put a thought on in-person learning for this, for today and tomorrow at the high school so we could stop the quarantine piece of it and really asking people to watch that. So, um, I shared, you know, yesterday, I posted our case data where we had gone from, um, and I don't normally post case data on a Sunday evening, but I thought, just so people could see where we were. So, we were at a hundred and seventy-two on Friday night, high school students that were quarantined. Uh, last night, we were at a hundred and twenty-one. And, uh, right now, we are at sixty-three. So, the quarantine number of kids, we knew that it was gonna be dropping off, so we could have held off. However, to risk having more kids put in that situation over the holidays was not worth it. And, um, our teachers have worked hard to make sure the virtual learning is much better, and so it didn't make sense to put anybody in that situation for the two days. The numbers were not at that situation in the other buildings. Um, and on Friday, we were at zero staff members positive, which we've never had since August, since we started doing a dashboard. Uh, we do have one positive staff member at this point, but still very, very low. Remember, that was the reason we went virtual in November at the middle and high school due to the number of staff members that were being out, not necessarily positive, but a combination. So, the staff situation is not at all something that, I mean, we're monitoring it, but it's not in the equation right now from what we were looking at. So, obviously, even three days, but that's what it does, like, you know, what a, the data dashboard can change that quickly. So, um, all of the other indicators that we're looking at, um, so that's, I just wanted to share with you right there what our, you know, what the data looks like as of now. We know we have another, from a high school situation, I think another thirty kids that drop off tomorrow. So, um, that, that's a good situation from there. Um, we will be sending out communication, um, I shared with the medical advisory group, to our parents to remind them that over the break, that they need to continue reporting quarantines and positive cases. The health departments will be open other than a couple, um, times on the holidays. So, to continue to report that, even if the quarantine period will be over before we return, sometimes quarantine periods are extended if people still have symptoms, so we need to know about all of that. Um, obviously, positive cases get reported, uh, but it's a lot, sometimes we get them sooner if somebody directly reports them to us, so we're gonna have, uh, we want to remind parents and staff to continue to report over the holidays, both through HR and, um, health will be, um, continuing to check on that. So, we know with the break, it's longer than Thanksgiving, um, so a couple note, a couple things to note there. Um, unlike the Thanksgiving holiday, people tend to celebrate the holidays, plural, multiple days, it's not just on one day. So, that, that could present more challenges if people are out in more places, doing more things over more days. That's just something to keep in mind, um, a, as we, you know, look forward to what that is. I'm having multiple holidays with testing centers and cases, there's going to be a, a, a double leg in getting the data and knowing what that is. And so, um, we just want people to continue, you know, there was some anticipation of the data after Thanksgiving and there, that there would be another surge, that so far, did not come to fruition the way that it was anticipated, at least here, you know, in Wisconsin. So, you know, whatever people did to do that, you know, we're encouraging them to continue to do that over these holidays and just pay very close attention. So, if anyone has symptoms, report to anybody, you know, even if they're not in our district, that, that that's the case so we can continue to monitor that. So, the data, we will be reporting it, it will not be quite as consistent with our schedules that we have been. There won't be a dashboard next Sunday, Monday, because substitute availa, everything will be green as far as the district, and there's no reason to report that. Um, and so, the case burden data, uh, we do continue to see that dropping. Um, we were below a thousand for two of our three communities, and the other one had one thousand and one for its case burden. So, we're seeing that drop down. It's still in the red zone, but it's, we were almost at two thousand. So, um, in November, for Greenfield, we were up over two thousand cases per one hundred thousand, and we've now dropped below a thousand. So, I don't know, like, you, I'm not gonna try to project or do any data analysis on that other than that's what it is right now. So, um, that's our case data as we look at it. Um, and so, again, our plans are always to use the data to make our decisions. So, the plan is to return everybody in person on January fourth. But that obviously is really important, that everybody continues to report to us, that we look at that and use that data to make the decisions, um, as we have been. And so, we'll really emphasize to families that that's our plan, and then, and then during the break, I'll send out a reminder to have them to continue to report, um, any cases that they have.
Any questions for Dr. Olson? Alright, thank you. B, athletic training room upgrade, Mr. David Pentec.
Uh, thank you, hello, everybody. I just wanted to bring you, uh, up to date on a new project that I'm working with, um, Todd Iverson on with Ogden Construction of the remodeling of our athletic training facility. Uh, many of you are aware that we have an outstanding athletic trainer, Bethany Shaw, and the facilities that she has, she has done outstanding with trying to make the current, uh, location that the athletic training room is, uh, adequate for the rehabilitation as well as the care that she provides, uh, all of our athletes. And, um, unfortunately, that room is becoming more and more, um, filled with, uh, instruments and other equipment that she utilizes, and the space that would be appropriate for her to give, uh, adequate, uh, service is, uh, dwindling. So, uh, it was, uh, talked about with myself and Mr. Tollison about relocating the athletic training room to a very lo, small utilized, um, locker room, uh, closer to the, uh, field hall, or actually our main gym, as well as the area that Bethany uses to transport, um, equipment in and out for outdoor activities. And, uh, that locker room would be then renovated to, uh, meet her needs. Uh, it would be changing the square footage of hers, which is roughly two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, to roughly four hundred and eighty-three, uh, square feet, uh, not including a wet room, which would be considered to be the shower area of this locker room. Uh, I provided Kathy Pa some pictures so that you can see, this locker room is located directly outside of the new cafeteria, and, uh, if you were in the cafeteria and you were heading west, heading out those doors, uh, the locker room is directly in front of you. It used to be called the freshman football locker room because this locker room was only utilized for the freshman football season. And in the, um, the pictures that are provided, you can see some of the actual, uh, location where Bethany works, um, and all of the equipment that's in there, the new facility. And then, uh, there is a picture of the storage cage inside the main, uh, boys locker room. That would be, uh, cleared out where all of the current lockers inside the freshman locker room would be relocated. So, we would actually not be loo, utilizing or losing, um, those lockers. We'd be utilizing those lockers in that area as well, so you would have all the boys in one locker room. Right next to them would be the athletic training room, and, um, and then the athletic, current athletic training room would be utilized for storage for, uh, all of our indoor sports, uh, as well- for all of our indoor sports as well as football, for uniforms and so forth. The entire project was bid out by Ogden Construction and they came in with a number of just over $12,000. And I was brought this to the Booster Club and the Booster Club is very generously donating $10,000 of that $12,000 towards renovation. And then the remaining would be occurred by myself and buildings and grounds with Todd Iverson and so forth. So I guess at this time, I will open it up to anybody that has questions. But otherwise, we're excited to bring this new facility to both Bethany as well as to the district because she does a great job and our athletes and the number of students that come through her is quite high. An average of over 20 a day. And then obviously that depends on the actual sport that is in session, if it's football or soccer as well as basketball and so forth. So the number of kids that come through there and having adequate facilities, this is definitely an improvement and we're excited to see what it looks like when it's done.
Any questions for Dave? Hard to turn that off or down, huh?
That's hard to do, yeah. We're excited to be working, obviously, with the Booster Club and they do a great job for all the different activities and co-creators, but this is a great project for us to be working with and having Ogden. And actually Ogden is donating half of the labor cost as well, so that is outstanding. The one thing that I forgot to mention and I apologize for not mentioning this right away is that with the donation, they would like to have their name on the athletic training room. So it would be the Ogden Athletic Training Room located at Whitno High School. We have talked about sponsorship in the past, but we have not discussed actual naming rights to indoor rooms to this point. So this would be a great opportunity to potentially discuss that or we can bring it up in the future if you'd like.
Well, I would say that if you would do that, you are setting a precedent. So be careful what you do, not saying it's right or wrong. Anybody have thoughts on that?
I did share with Dave that if we move forward with that, that needs to be a separate action item in the future. That is not part of that report or here because that's a separate item. And so that he should mention it tonight as a possibility, that the board needs to take action on that. I think we struggled initially like setting up all these guidelines for sponsorship, if you think about it, because we didn't have anything tangible to talk about. So this would be a very tangible topic and then to talk about what parameters, if we do want to do that, if we don't want to do that, what a signage look like, what, you know, all of that stuff. So that would have to be an action item because we currently don't have any policy or procedure on what to do with that. So and that's, so it's the labor cost of it, it's not, you know, some of the other pieces. And I think, Dave, what did you say that half of the labor cost is that they're donating?
$2,400, the entire labor is $4,800.
So we'd have to decide, at the end of the day, if we said, no, we're not willing to do labor, we'd have to come up with the $2,400 in a different source. Or we're like, sure, that's worth naming rights. Is it forever and ever for $2,400 you get the naming rights of this room? So I just want to plant that seed, but that discussion probably should happen in January. I mean, we're not talking $100,000 here as far as something. And so I guess we did talk about, like, what does sponsorship mean? How long is it and all of that stuff? So we don't have to go into it today, but it does need to be something that the board will have to take action on in order to move that piece of this forward. It doesn't hold up the project by any means, but definitely is something the board will have to take action on.
Anything for Dave? Thank you, Dave, good job, get her done.
Thank you.
Name, Neil. D, excuse me, C, Director of Business Services, Mr. Mike.
Yep, so a few things we wanted to discuss in kind of a broad way, thus this particularly broad topic. First, people in the community receive their tax bills, what, within the last week, 10 days? And for Whitno, we've especially touted the fact that we have brought our overall levy down almost $100,000 from last year, bringing the mill rate down a significant amount, 4.5%. And when the rest of the state saw an average increase of their taxes for schools at about, what, 3? A little over 3%, I think Quinn is what you had stated. And so as property tax bills went out last week, especially our Greenfield residents, did not see that tax decrease, they saw a tax increase. And so that raises, of course, a lot of questions about why that is. So I thought I'd take some time to just break that down. I sent a communication to the board on the 15th and just important now to get it out to the public as well. So first of all, in any given year, when we get property valuations, and this is just a baseline just to know moving forward, when we get property valuations from the state of Wisconsin, we get that property valuation in the form of equalized valuation. And that means that taxes that we, the taxes that we are going to put forth to the community are going to be spread out based on fair market values in each of our three municipalities, Greenfield, Franklin and Hales Corners. Once the municipalities get the dollars, they spread it out based on assessed values. And you'll notice on your property taxes that that's really two different values that you see. And so right off the bat, I've always been careful to say, this is the average, right? This is the average decrease or increase that'll be seen across the three municipalities. And there's a lot of other factors that go into it. That being first and foremost, is a fundamental difference between what we see and how taxes are spread out, equalized value, and then how they're applied to assessed values. So that's number one. What then made this, what caused Greenfield's taxes to go up and Hales Corners and Franklin's taxes to go down was the fact that across the district, we had property values rise about 4.1%. So that was the equalized value that we were going off of district-wide. When you break it down by municipality, Greenfield's property values went up a little over 5.5%. Hales Corners, 2.5% and Franklin about 3.8%. Why this matters is now, this is a greater share of the taxes that are going to go to Greenfield residents because their property value in comparison to Hales Corners and Franklin looks richer. To be honest, it looks like it's more lucrative. And thus, when you spread out the taxes that Whitno has, more is going to go to Greenfield than Hales Corners and Franklin. So when you look at the numbers compared from this year to last year, Greenfield, on average, went up almost 1%. So even though we decreased our taxes overall, Greenfield residents saw almost 1% more than they did last year. Hales Corners residents saw about 2.5% less and Franklin saw almost 1% less. So while we touted a negative 0.57% decrease in our tax levy, again, 1% more went to Greenfield this year than last year. 2% less to Hales Corners, 1% less to Franklin. Then when you spread it out over assessed values, within Greenfield, within Franklin, within Hales Corners, each resident's going to get different fluctuations based on how their property was assessed in that particular year. So that's what I can tell you. The district, you know, as a taxing entity, we are certainly trying to do, and I think we've said this many times now, I think we are on a steady path of decreasing the overall tax levy. I think we can continue on that path for the foreseeable future regardless of how the biennium turns out. I think what we don't have the control over is how those property values rise and fall on any given year and how that, those dollars then get spread out over assessed values. So we saw, again, I'll just recap, we saw our tax levy fall. It went from 16.6 to 16.5. We can continue on that path moving forward. How the property values then play with each municipality is really out of our control. We can do our part by continuing to lower that overall levy.
Questions for Mike? So two of the three municipalities actually went down.
Yes.
The Whitno portion.
Yes, the Whitno portion, correct. Hales Corners saw this most significant decrease because their property values rose the least.
Sound good?
Yep.
Okay. Second thing I want to talk about is our transportation contract, everyone's favorite topic. We have our five-year contract ending, and I'm not asking for actions, this isn't an action, I was just informational, probably bring it back in January. We got together as our group often does, again, that group is Greendale, Greenfield and Franklin, to discuss what we want to do with the transportation contract moving forward. Kind of an anomaly in our relationship with our other schools is that Greenfield of our four districts has an additional year on their contract that none of the other three districts have, which is just, it's an anomaly. It was based on something that happened in 2016 right away within their contract. I don't know all the details, all I know is that Greenfield ended up getting another year at 2.5% increase than the other three districts, than ourselves, Greendale and Franklin. And so we find as a group of four, that we are clearly going to have much more bargaining power when it's, Greenfield is on the same schedule as ourselves and all four of us as one. Really, that bargaining power comes from just the overall amount of buses and then specifically being able to be large enough to warrant a terminal, which we've talked about in the past, here in the area. If we would go out on our own outside of this relationship with the four, whether a bus company would see it as beneficial to just bring on Whitno and build a terminal right next to it, it probably wouldn't, it probably would not happen, but that could be evaluated. So we want to get on the same timeline as Franklin, 2.5% increases what we've had.
As Greenfield.
Yes, thank you, Greenfield. We want to get on that same timeframe as Greenfield. Greenfield would like to exercise the contract. And quite frankly, if we were told a 2.5% increase, we would take that increase as well, just given what we're seeing in the industry with wages and things like that and the competition. So we decided to get First Student's take on this, we being the four of us. Franklin, their director typically takes the lead on the contract and the discussions with First Student. And we asked First Student if they would simply extend our contract just one more year at 2.5% for the other three districts to get us all lined up and move forward, probably with an RFP then at that point with Greenfield on the same contract length as ourselves. First Student responded that they would give us the 2.5% increase if, one, Franklin and Whitno add language to their contracts that they will pay 50% of the regular fee for any days less than the number of student transport days. Now, that is for next year, moving forward to next year. Currently, this year, we don't have that language and that was part of our discussion this last spring, or summer, I should say. So they're asking that Franklin and Whitno would add that language moving forward. Quite frankly, and Franklin has said the same thing as our own legal counsel has said, that 50%. We believe that that is going to become a part of regular contract language in transportation contracts across the area. That this was a wake-up call for the transportation companies, that that language does need to be in there. It would be extremely hard for districts to find a particular contract that doesn't have that language in it moving forward. Two, and we've seen this, saw this bear out in the area data, that 50% is a relatively low fee, probably, it is the lowest, besides being silent. It is the lowest fee that we saw for this particular language. So Franklin and ourselves would need to add that to the contract language for this extended year. And just as a heads up, more than likely, no matter who we would go with following next year, we'd more than likely have that as part of our language and negotiations moving forward. Now, on that particular point, I think we can do something in response that says, listen, we've typically gotten snow days or a day here and there, that while there's 177 contact days, let's say 174 is the standard, you know, anything greater than that, we can play with that language, but that's what they're looking for. Two then, and maybe a little less significant and completely understandable as well, given a one-year addition to the contract, that they would not have to buy any new buses to keep the fleet aged within our contract requirements. Typically, buses have that language in there only when they know that you're going to have a five-year contract or more. When you sink $120,000 into a bus, you'd like to know that you're going to be doing that for more than one year and you're going to get some age out of that. So they'd said, we purchased eight new buses in 2021 for your fleet. We would look to not purchase any buses in '21, '22 while you go out to RFP and determine whether First Student is going to be continued relationship. So those are the two items they're looking for, to be able to just get this one-year extension. Particularly for us as a group of four, you know, we don't necessarily want to go out to bid in kind of a crazy year. We don't really know what we're going to see with different companies and where they are financially. And we would prefer to just, like I said, get on the same page with Greenfield and really be in an RFP environment that is a little more normalized, which we would hope would happen next year. And a 2.5% increase based on where everything is, we feel comfortable with that increase. That's been what we've seen the last four years, it would be a continuation of that. And ultimately though, this contract would have to come to the board for approval, I would hope in January, so that we know whether we're moving forward or doing something different.
Any questions for Mike? Steven?
Does Greenfield have the 50%?
Greenfield and Greendale do.
Okay, so half of us do.
Yep, yep.
And that was a result of last year's negotiations with them?
The result of what happened in June, yep, June, whatever that was, June, July, we said no to that. So so far, so in November, when we shut down for those two weeks for the middle school and high school, it's $12,000 right now that they are crediting us for that particular shutdown. That's $12,000 that those other two districts would have to pay. So that's where we, you know, I think prudently said, no, we're not going to put that in there right now. If you need to come back and negotiate, we can this year. They have not asked to, I'm not going to ask to, so, yeah.
What is 2% otherwise?
Yeah, so we're looking, yeah, we're looking at about a $600,000 contract, so you're looking at probably $60,000.
And how have they met our needs?
So far, I like the new terminal manager, they've got a new terminal manager there. Obviously, it's a year that's a little different to assess. You've got a lot less ridership than we have in the past, so it's much easier to get the routes accomplished than when you've got full routes and trying to meet times. But I've been pretty pleased with the new terminal manager and they continue to be very responsive to what we've had, but haven't had a lot of issues really, and so, which is great. I can't evaluate on a number of issues that we have in the past.
So possibly we could, by not having that caveat in there, we could actually save the money from the rebates that we get to pay for the increase.
To pay for the increase, you could look at it that way and that would be a very, that'd be a great way to think about it. Yep.
Can I be, Mike?
Yeah.
Can I clarify something? So when Quinn asked about the dollar, you said it's a $600,000 contract, right?
Oh, 2%, yeah, yeah, 12, hey Quinn, 12,000.
You say it was about 60,000 or?
120,000.
12,000.
Thank God he's the one to charge the money.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I heard it right.
12,000, 60,000, thank you, Jonathan.
Is it two and a half percent or 2%?
Two, two and a half, two and a half percent.
You may need an auditor.
Twelve to 15.
Twelve to 15, thank you. And I'm guessing on the 600, that's a ballpark, a yes. Six million, I'm joking, 600,000. Thanks, Jonathan.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Any else? Mike?
Let me look at my notes. Just now, just two, a couple of quick things.
Sure.
One is with the cafeteria multipurpose remodel. We're finishing up the finances on that. We've closed out with C.G. Schmidt. We'll get our final billing from Bray, either at or right below budget, and then if we do utilize the state trust fund loan to help us to pay for some of that as well, we'll be in really good shape. So, when that's completely finalized, I'll give a quick report to the board about where we came in financially on that particular project. Been working with Steve to show some ways in which we can do some visuals where we currently stand with the budget moving forward, just some different graphs and some different numbers to use to just give a comparison of where we are this year versus previous years, something to roll out that we really haven't looked at in the past. So, when that's ready to roll out, maybe next month, we'll do a mid-year report on where we stand with the budget as a comparison to past years, and you can see some nice colorful graphs. Finally, just as a note, our business services office has really been changing positions. We'll have a new talent management, manager of talent management coming on January 4th, Tom Dorgan. He'll be here at some point in July to introduce, July, January to introduce himself. We have Karen, who's taking over as our accountant, and Dan Arnold, who's going to continue on with us in the accounts payable and budget, department budget area, and then Kristin and Lisa are going to remain in their same positions as HR generalist and payroll person. And so, I just wanted to mention that, as I'm excited to work with this team. I think there's really a lot of talented people that I'm working around right now, and a lot more talented than the director. So, I feel really good about the positions right now and where that department's headed. So, that's all.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Okay, on to number 6D, superintendent's report. Dr. Olson.
Two items I'd like to share with you that both have sort of come out of the collaboration with our district building leader committee. As you know, I meet with them monthly, and this last month, met with their building teams a little bit to hear from them and that. You may recall that we typically bring forward our school calendar for the next year in December to approve, and you've not yet approved it. And I shared with that, shared that with you earlier, that we were going to wait a month to sort of see a couple of different things, to see what changes there might be, or if there are some things we're learning this year that might cause us to modify that. For those of you that have been on the board for a while, know that that start date has been an issue at the state for a long time, and we're still not really getting any budge on that. We shall see if any of the rest of that changes. I think a lot of us are hoping that things like instructional hours and that, which seems such a finite thing in what we're dealing with now, will not become so binding as they have in the past, like when you're having to add a minute to a school day just to get those hours, you're asking like, this is insane, this is just insanity, when does this stop? And so, we're still under those structures right now with the number of instructional days and all of those things, and contracted time by our educators. So, we still use those as the parameters, but still try to say, well, what did we learn? And so, in January, you will see the '21, '22 school calendar. Met with that group and sort of went through a draft and had some, a couple ideas that were based on some things we learned this year about the school calendar, how we're doing some of our professional development with teachers, the start of the school year. If you remember, we had a tiered start that was very intentional for the physical presence of students, but there were some good things that came out of that, that they would like to carry forward into the next year. Also, you know, how do we plan on snow days moving forward? With that, will that always be lost time? You know, was that just a thing of the past? Is there no traditions like, hey, at least there's a free one? So, we talked about all of that, and I think because it was, you know, a lot of their suggestions on how to move forward and what they're hearing, what worked in that, I feel really good about the school calendar. And so, we'll bring that forward in January, so families can look forward to that being approved. So, we'll share on January 11th, and then the board takes action on January 25th when we get that there. So, we're a month behind this year, but it was very intentional to be able to take advantage of some of the things that we learned this year, and so, I think that group feels good about that school calendar proposal. In my meeting with the building teams, there was also some conversation, and so, I have a letter drafted that, you know, I wanted to wait till after tonight to share with the board before we shared out with families, and so, I'm just going to read from you part of it that talks about something that our teachers have discussed. So, we all know that we chose a learning model that provided an option for both in-person and distance, and that was to accommodate a lot of different preferences from our families. And I know that you don't forget, and most of our families don't forget either, but there is an extra, you know, burden that that puts on our educators, who are having to both straddle both of those worlds as students come in and out of quarantine. And so, we need to acknowledge that, and so, the other thing that we've noticed during homebound instruction is we initially said, we're going to take a pause day, we have to get students oriented to what homebound will be while they're on quarantine, staff members who are going to go on quarantine, they also have to take this pause day. Throughout all of our revised processes, we eliminated that pause day. I think it's a rare day now by 3 o'clock in which all the contact tracing is done, all the homebound for the next day has been notified, and that's a world of difference from where we started. So, we've eliminated a pause day. We've got device pickup immediately if a student is on there and they're notified, materials are there to pick up. The other thing that we've done throughout this whole semester is that we're now embedding even more synchronous learning when students are out. We originally said that that's very challenging for a teacher to be able to do in-person and simultaneously do that. We've been gradually doing that as teachers have been learning about that and how to make sure that confidentiality is not a concern. So, in addition to, I'm telling, I'll get to the point here, but I'm trying to just lead up to this piece, is that in addition to all of that, our educators continued to telework while they may have been out on quarantine or in isolation. In addition to when students go out on quarantine or isolation, they continue to use their prep time to meet individually with those students, digitally to make sure that they're connecting while they're out. We use both of our fall in-service days, the one in October and one in November, for teachers to make sure to get better at Canvas and to make sure that we could pivot if we needed to, to go to virtual. Those days typically provided some time for teachers to work on curriculum, to collaborate with each other, to plan ahead a little bit on units that they were doing, to look at students, plan for, all of those types of things. But we needed those days to make sure that we were ready to pivot, and they came in handy, because I would say that when our middle and high school for two weeks needed to go virtual, we didn't pause, we didn't skip a beat, we went there. Many other districts are taking a day to even transition when they transition back and forth. And I say that because that's all a credit to the teachers' commitment through all of this. The sacrifice to teachers, besides the commitment and all of the time that they're putting is, is that they have lost any collaborative time, planning time with each other. All of their time has been taken up with things that would not normally be part of that. There are no conferences this year, there is no, we're not allowing them to, you know, during, often they would get a sub for a day in which teams would just plan even during the school year, like a team would go and plan, and we would get subs to cover their classes. With the shortage of sub, that's not even being allowed. So, listening to teachers and really hearing them and saying, "We are missing some collaborative time with our peers to talk about curriculum, some of the data, planning units," like that time doesn't exist. Our prep hours can't be used that way, all of that, and the district PD days, the one on January 18, they will be using the time to plan for the over 160 requests that came to switch learning models. So, we have 160 requests for students to either switch one way or the other. And so, now, teachers will have to adjust again as to what new students might be coming into their classes, what ones will be leaving to a different model. We had to take the middle and high school schedule and redo a lot of the sections, rebalance numbers and all of that. So, the January 18th, again, will be spent on stuff that would not be in a normal year, all to be able to provide this learning model that we're in. So, at their request and looking at the calendar, taking Friday, January 15th, and turning it into a planning day for teachers in which they truly, district time isn't going to be asked, in which they can plan to work on curriculum, getting ready for planning units ahead, and they really feel like they're just surviving right now and not planning ahead to be able to collaborate with, like, hey, what is working for you? How are you getting kids engaged if they're here, or what planning is there? So, the recommendation is that we take that Friday and add that as a PD day. We have not taken pause day, we've not doing this, and it's not an off day for teachers. It's a planning collaborative day for them to be able to get ahead of that work. And again, it makes it better, because if we're just doing and not pausing to plan, we ought to make sure that we're using that time when we do have students in front of us, that they're losing, that they would normally plan for instruction, that we can capture that time. And so, the plan would be to communicate that to parents either tonight, yep, so they can plan. It's just under a month away from now, so if that, the 18th was already a planned day, but if the 15th is an additional day in which they might need childcare or may need to make accommodations, some that have older siblings, obviously, that helps out with that, but we want to communicate that. But it's a request from our teachers, and I really feel that it is important. I think it makes for better learning also, because all of that time they would have normally had in a year would be gone. And so, I just wanted to share that this year. Have a letter drafted already to go to parents, but wanted to talk about that a little bit here as we do that. And I think families are appreciative of what our teachers are doing, and this is one way to give them some planning time to make sure that the work they're doing, and just to connect with the other educators. They are, they're spending the time in their classrooms, they're not out in the hall congregating. I mean, the stuff that we're asking them to do, they're rising to that challenge, but they need to connect every once in a while from that professional learning, and so, that's what their ask was, and I think it's a pretty simple thing that we can give back, because it benefits our students also in that work, so.
Any questions for Lisa?
Hello?
No.
Can I, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Lisa, how are we auditing? I know you mentioned that teachers are, you know, spending their downtime, meeting individually with students who may be on virtual learning. How are we auditing that or the content that's available virtually versus in-person or, you know, synchronous learning? How are we auditing from one teacher to the next, the experience our students are having?
Yeah, that's a good question. Our principals have been working with them to up the expectation, and now the auditing, as you called it, is going to happen with, starting second semester with much more specific things, student surveys, parent surveys, checking in Canvas courses. This was new for a lot of our teachers and what this meant for expectations. How do we engage students when they're not, when they're in quarantine and you have a high school student who just chooses not to log on all the time? What do you do? Is that truancy? How do you get them to do that? And so, up until this time, we've been trying to get teachers to build the courses, make sure there's, those components are there, and that is one of the thing, actually, that some of our teachers have wanted. How do we collaborate? How do we ensure that they're coordinating and a lot of that? So, that is built into some of the principal plans that we're looking at and working with the coaches on some of that, Jonathan. So, that is a concern, making sure they have the tools available to them and training that they know how to do that before we, you know, immediately assume that they are or aren't doing it, because for some, for most, it's a very different world for them. If they have a student physically in their classroom and they're not engaged, what they might do versus someone who's in quarantine and isn't logging in, how do you deal with that lack of engagement? That's a very different thing, and the age of the child is very different. So, getting used to some of the structures and expectations and communicating it, and now following up with the accountability and auditing of that to make sure that it's actually happening.
And then, I know last year especially, we were talking about how we could track if, you know, if kids were missing parts or falling behind or kind of where they finish at the end of the year. Are we going to have something in place to do the same type of check-in in spring or before the end of this academic year to see where our kids are and if anybody is behind in anything, or if kids have missed up and find a way to catch them up?
Yeah, I think there's two different levels, probably. One is proficiency of standards, and then at your high school, you always have the credit piece of it towards graduation. So, Jen has been working with our map testing and meeting with all the principals on where they are at grade level, students who are behind in that. So, we have all of our map testing done, and we did it at our high school and middle school, and so, we have that data. So, she's been working with the principals for plans for students who are behind, some of them had adjusted their second semester schedule, intervention programming. So, we have some strategies that are being put in place for students who are behind grade level, not even if it was related to the pandemic, but much more widespread with coaches. I think our high school counselors are a little bit more in tune to where students are related to credit, and teachers have been reporting, you know, where they are as far as a timeline, where they would normally be at this time. I think they are seeing a little bit, you know, and I think Charlie's not on here anymore, but about a couple of weeks behind in some of our high school classes, and partially understand when students are in and out of quarantine, it's hard to get some continuity of timelines in there, so that's not necessarily there. So, I think they are much more in tune, and I think I shared with the board the question that was shared with them, how will I measure learning? So, that is their proposed question, and they will visit that on January 18th. And then, what will I do when I notice that students are not where they need to be? So, remember, we added some special education coaches to be able to help with some of those strategies. We have our literacy and math coaches to be able to help. How do we get students who are not at grade level? And letter grade or not letter grade, we still have map testing and some of the other assessments that let us know if students are where they need to be. So, I think we have a lot more systemization of that. Perfect, no, but I do think people are much more aware of it, that regardless of what this year was going to look like, we can't just say, well, oh, well, we did or did not get to it. So, Lynn also, through the curriculum mapping, now that that hub is done, you can see where teachers are in the timeline of getting through the curriculum. So, we have a lot of other structures in place, and we all know that the stopgap we used over the summer to get kids through learning, to get through, that they did not, those incompletes at middle and high school, it got some kids through, but it was not highly successful because they were, it was out of the blue. So, I think we have some strategies for the summer, should we find students in that, and now that we are much more used to virtual learning, I think that opens up a lot more options.
And can I ask one more question? I promised the last one.
Sure.
Specifically, I guess it would apply to the middle school too, but at the high school, just because of the learning type and where assignments seem to be turned in and they're tracked, I know when kids are transitioning from, you know, if they have to go out on quarantine or whatnot, it can take some time for them to find the resources they need, especially if it's their first time going through it. And is there, appeal's probably not the right word, but I understand that there's, you know, requirements in place and deadlines in place, and we need to hold kids to do that, but if something, if a kid is transitioning to virtual or whatnot, and they don't have access to the work they need or the resources they need or assignments or anything, and they fall behind, is there some sort of process where they can, you know, talk to their counselor or talk to someone about getting, you know, a grace period basically to catch up on those assignments, especially if they've talked to the teacher and the teacher's response is, "I know what was due on this day." Sorry, is there a process for them to follow up on that without obviously having to get a parent involved or something like that?
Charlie, are you still on?
I am. Do you want me to jump in?
Do you want me to jump in on this?
Yes, please.
So Jonathan, to your, to your question, a, a couple of points. Um, one, obviously, you know, we, we want to continue the communication process. We want to make sure that, you know, students, teachers, parents, we're all in communication on current status of where things are at. So yes, if, if a student is quarantined and unable to connect, uh, we want them to be able to communicate that to us some way, somehow, so that we are able to excuse those dates. We understand that technology is not perfect. We also understand that sometime, you know, even with technology, I mean, even right now here, you know, me sitting in my living room at home, I, I can hear things, but not hear everything perfectly. It's not quite the same as being one person. Built into our, our process, you know, a, a teacher can, uh, provide a student an incomplete, uh, for the semester grade. There's a, a period of two weeks that we ask that teacher and the student work to get that, that incomplete completed so that it just, it doesn't hang out there forever. But, uh, they're always the one-off, you know, case scenarios. Counselors, teachers work through those, uh, situations and scenarios. Really, really, it's, individual students have individual needs, and we try to address those and, uh, do the best that we can with those.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I was, you know, obviously it's a trying time for everybody. And if this, you know, if our students, especially at the high school, have been working hard and have their grade point average up, and then for whatever reason they end up on quarantine and, you know, something out of their control ends up dropping their, their GPA because of that, um, I just, you know, have a way for them to, or their parents, whatever, to follow up on it, see if it can be resolved so they're not negatively affected long-term because of it.
Absolutely. And, and I would say at this point, you know, my plea out to parents is please look at Infinite Campus. Please look at your students' grades. Everything that's posted is, is not, you know, new. It's, it's been an ongoing process since September. Um, not until January 21st when we're a day before the semester ends. Let's, let's have the conversation now, um, on, you know, December 21st, when, uh, there's still some time to work through any, any issues that may exist.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, uh, six E, school board PTO and liaison reports. Kevin?
Yeah. So the middle school met on December 9th. Um, talking about their different eat and earns they're going to do. Um, they have a lot coming up. Uh, January 13th is going to be Noodles &amp; Company in Hales Corners. It's going to be from four to eight. And February 9th, they also have Chipotle. And then they are working on something exciting, which is the Saz's food trucks. So they're going to work to try to get a date, uh, in January and then hopefully be able to have that set up in the parking lot on a Friday in the spring. And that's a really good, uh, fundraiser because essentially you get 15% of everything they sell. And when it's a fish fry, they sell 400 fish fries and they sell out in addition to all the other things they sell. So it's going to be a good moneymaker for them, for sure.
Thank you, Kevin. Steven?
Uh, Bushcub did not meet this month. They resume their meetings next month.
Jesse?
Same thing, next month.
Nancy?
Uh, the board was supposed to meet last week, Thursday, but because of the traveling Santa, who I hope some of you saw.
Yes!
They do an awesome job. And, uh, so they, actually they're meeting tonight, so I wasn't able to attend.
Karen?
Um, band, uh, or excuse me, music boosters has just been quiet. So I think Steve and I are going to reach out to them.
Okay, thank you. And Edgerton, we did meet. Um, not a lot going on, so, all right. Seven A, legislative and advocacy. I, SWA, SAV report. So I was, um, I did, I did attend. I was in and out quite a bit. Uh, again, we had the two doctors from Children's Hospital, and, uh, they're asked amazing questions, and they give you real-time, real, real good answers. That they're, it is a great resource for our, for our association, and we're lucky to have them. And we have them about once a month, right?
Yep, every month, yep.
Yep. And then we had, uh, our third, uh, state superintendent candidate, uh, Dr. Deb Kerr, uh, recently retired from the Brown Deer School District. And then I, I was not able to, I, I had to leave, and then I couldn't get back in, so I missed Rami. Rami, who is our, uh, who is our lobbyist? What'd she have to say?
Um, I think that, uh, she did share, you know, we're getting ready to gear up for a biennial budget, which is always, you know, every other year here. I think a lot of the lobbyists are sort of, um, wondering how all the reassignments in a lot of the committee chairs, specifically finance and education, will play out. There's a, they, this is, this is the, probably the biggest shakeup that most of them have seen in their times as lobbyists. Normally there's a, a slight switch here and there. But with Senator Luther Olson not returning, and he had been the chair of the Education Committee for many years, um, there's a shift there. Um, and there's also a shift in finance. And so I think that that's, um, an interesting time to be heading into a biennial budget with so many other, you know, with the presidential, uh, switch, with changes in all of those committees that we all, like, if you know people who typically, how they're going to look at a budget or what they're going to bring to hearing, because it's really up to them if they bring it into a hearing or not, or if they take a matter up. So I think that was where she was saying that there's, there's, I've never seen, uh, both her and, and John Forrester like, talk about things that way. So I think they're trying to figure it all out, and it's really hard to get a read, which as a lobbyist is not a good position to be in right now, not knowing where you should spend your time talking to which legislator. So we have a new senator. And so, um, you know, at some point, to be able to, you know, we had Senator Craig prior to that. He did not run again. And so we, um, probably, you know, want to reach out to that. Otherwise our assembly people are, are the same.
Any questions?
Is Luther Olson the one that was running schools from starting before the first of September?
To some extent, yes. He was as, as chair of the Education Committee. So I don't know that, it's the tourism group that always blocks that. He was tight because that was the Dells that he sort of had. Um, you know, his other person, regardless of him being in the chair of the Education Committee, um, it's Representative Biesfeld, who's from the Oshkosh area. So, um, I think they're still going to have that constituency, whether or not there's that tight of that. Um, I think it'll be interesting, we will have a new state superintendent regardless, uh, because the current one is not running again. So that change, in addition to this change, in addition to a presidential change, brings up a lot of unknowns in the variables and the, the state budget in a pandemic. People projected, is it up or is it down? And, and it's coming, projections are, people are missing projections lately. So that makes us all a little bit nervous when we look at stuff like that, so.
Yeah, Luther Olson, to his credit, never, he was upfront about it. He was very transparent that it wasn't going to get the time of light with him. Right? I mean, he told us that straight out.
Yeah, he did.
So hopefully there's a difference. Any other questions? Kate? Uh, eight items for hu, future consideration. Number nine, announcements.
Just one thing I wanted to say. Looking at our medical data, as we've seen, there was a lot of anxiety coming into the holidays and what would happen with Thanksgiving and what the numbers would do. And we've seen on other parts of the country that apparently people didn't behave well and past the virus spread a lot more. Whereas here in Wisconsin and in our area, I think we did a great job. I just want to kind of like throw back to anyone who watches this meeting[1747.11]